Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, June 24, 2024, 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Divatieri.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, we have a lengthy agenda to work through on tonight. We'll be approving our budget. However, I know that there are some other items on here that has a lot of interest into it. I'm asking you to limit your responses at the mic when you come. Please not be repetitive. If someone has already stated that fact for you, please don't state it again. I'm asking nicely so we can try to expedite through some of this and we could all work together. Last thing, please be nice to one another. I'm gonna say it again, please be nice to one another. That means for everybody that's in here, be nice to one another. Use your, govern yourself accordingly, let me say it that way. All right? Item number one on the public hearing agenda, please.
An ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond's budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. In accordance with the procedure set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond's Charter, Mayor Pete Panapinto.
I believe we're gonna have some changes, if I'm not correct.
Yeah.
All right, Laura's on her way right now. She'll be here in a second so she can document everything that we're changing.
You wanna go to?
Is that Laura?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll go ahead and go to the next item and come back.
All right.
All right. All right, the next item on the, uh, public hearing agenda. Let me say this before Ms. Lisa reads this. Tonight, we are not here to vote on a homeless shelter at all. Tonight, we're here to discuss the definition of a homeless shelter in Hammond. What would be the guidelines? In other words, cleaning up what's already out there. I just want to be clear on that, that we, that's not what we're doing tonight. Ms. Lisa?
An ordinance of the Hammond City Council amending the Unified Development Code defining group living facility, group care facility, homeless shelter, providing for inclusive zoning of each and defining conditional uses. Mayor Pete.
I believe Carly actually brought this up, basically changing the definitions.
Yeah. You want me to?
Please.
Okay. So previously, uh, there was a different amendment to the UDC that I created, just creating a homeless shelter definition, um, because it wasn't clear in the UDC what that was. Uh, sent it to the Planning and Zoning so that Planning and Zoning could look at it and determine, um, a better definition, which is what I wanted and is, which is what they did. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission has, with the help of our, uh, city planner, has come up with changes to the UDC that define homeless shelter, that provide for which zones they are allowed in, and then some, uh, not only homeless shelter, but also, sorry. It's in here.
Homeless shelter.
Yeah. Uh, group care facility, group living facility, and homeless shelter. So, the amendment, the ordinance provides definitions for those, um, and it also, again, provides where in the zones they can, they can be. Uh, and let me add, like I said last time, that this is not unzoning the, um, Northlake Homeless Coalition property, as I've said in the last meeting. We are not unzoning it. It's actually provided for, uh, homeless shelter is provided for in that zone. There is a, a requirement of putting some conditions on that. The conditions, I think is important that the community is able to come in and say, what are those conditions? I think that that is appropriate discussion, whether it's had tonight, it's had at other planning and zoning meetings, let's have that conversation, um, so that we can address the need, the concerns of the community, because there are a lot of concerns of the community, both ways. We want it, we don't want it, we, we don't want it for these reasons, we do want it for these reasons. Let's get that out and have some actual conversation and so make sure people's voices are heard, and those conditions can be incorporated into this project and, um, the city can make sure that we're properly regulating it.
Anyone else on the panel, if anyone else, council before I take public? All right. Anyone from the public, step to the mic, give your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Mickey Hubbell with Brazil Saxon Wilson Law Firm in Baton Rouge, um, 301 Main Street. Um, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Northlake Homeless Coalition, and I had a question, it's kind of a technical question, um, about, right now, under the current zoning ordinance, there's group living, and it's, is shown on the zoning matrix as allowed by conditional use. Now, there's an amendment to the definition of conditional use, and there's procedures set up for restricted conditional use and an expanded conditional use. So, what, my question is, what procedure does Northlake have to follow now, before the text amendment, and what procedure would they have to follow after the text amendment?
So, I'll just address that, Mickey. Um, the, the issue of, uh, conditional uses itself is not changing. So, the, the same conditional use process that was before is gonna be the same after.
Okay.
So, those, so those uses that are shown to be conditional uses before, if, if the ordinance passes and the homeless shelter is a conditional use, it's the same process they would have gone through.
Okay, so what, what is that process? Because-
It's approval by the council is the biggest thing. That's the, that's the same as it was before. Existing today, any, uh, use listed as a conditional use needs council approval for expanded conditional uses, which is what is, uh, considered when, uh, uh, use is listed as conditional. That's not gonna change.
Okay, so what is restricted conditional use?
So, restricted conditional use is, is things that restrict a, allowed use of the property compared to expanded. And, and that's, that's been done on occasion, typically with the rezoning, it's been done. Um, so, so this would be, this is an expanded conditional use, uh, under definition, which isn't changing. So, those conditions would be determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by the city council.
Okay, so, under the current zoning, there's a definition of group living. There's also a definition of social services, right? Social services is shown as of right, right? It says allowed by right, and the, the, uh, conditional use, or rather, the, um, group living is shown as allowed by conditional use. So, it doesn't speak to restricted or expanded. I mean, if it's allowed, it's permissible. Why is it being expanded now? Why would that procedure? Because it's drastically different procedures.
Well, it's not, it's not changing as, as opposed to conditional uses. Mickey, I'm not gonna get into a debate with you about the, the merits of, uh, of an argument to be made in court. All that's happening today is, uh, providing for a deposition, a definition of homeless shelter, which didn't exist, definition of group living facility, a clear definition of group care facility, and how those three particular uses, where they're gonna be allowed and under what, uh, conditions, such as homeless shelter, a conditional use.
Understand, and I'm not trying to argue with you about it, I'm just trying to understand it, because what I'm concerned with is the implementation of the text amendment to the ordinance, how that'll be applied. And under the expanded conditional use definition, it's just like an application for rezoning. And my question is, is that what they, when they bought the property, were they required to file an application for rezoning, or similar application for rezoning, to be able to use it as a homeless shelter?
Well, I'm not gonna get into hypotheticals on, on what was or wasn't submitted, um, so I, I can't really address that question, Mickey.
Okay. All right. The only other thing, I had a procedural question about, there was a, there was a withdrawal of the prior ordinance and introduction of a new ordinance, and I, I looked, but I couldn't find the advertisement of the introduction to new ordinance. Has it been advertised?
This ordinance?
Yeah.
I believe it has been.
It's been advertised bef, okay, that was before the introduction of the ordinance for that May 28th council hearing?
So, the, the, uh, may, the, the original ordinance that came up first, that was basically deemed to be moot because this new ordinance basically covered those things that were addressed previous. This new ordinance that is being proposed was advertised.
Okay. Well, maybe I missed it, I had somebody check it and they couldn't find it, but that's why-
Happy to get with you on that, with that question.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Tom Anderson, 107, uh, North Spruce Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I just have a, a follow-up question about, uh, the, uh, conditional and allowed use, because when it came to the, uh, attended one of the zoning and planning commission meetings, they were, if I was understanding it correctly, it, there was allowed use and conditional use, and I understood the difference between the two, and when the, um, homeless, uh, or what, the homeless, uh, Northlake came before, at that time, it was an allowed use at that time. So, if this ordinance has passed, I don't think, you know, something that was an allowed use when, when the homes, when the homeless shelter came before it, could be changed to a conditional use, you know, after the fact, and then you have to place conditions on it. And without knowing what those conditions are, I think it's just, it's leading to a kind of a legal quagmire, um, i- in the event that they are removed from an allowed use, which they were there at the time that they, they came here and purchased the building, and now it's gonna become under conditional use, which is more restrictive, and therefore, without knowing what those conditions are, or examples of what those conditions are, I think it's just leading to additional problems that might lead to additional attorney fees. And I'm just trying to just, if it could just get a clarification on that, so these people could know that who bought this building and have the grants to operate it now, uh, can do that, or at least know what conditions they're gonna be subject to when doing it. And then ultimately, I think, the ultimate question is, is if this happens, you know, there's been a lot of fear and misleading statements about it, that they're out there and, you know, not be guided by fear or intimidation, that the council would certainly be inspired by, like, what's good for Hammond, and let, giving this thing a chance? And if it doesn't operate correctly, under whatever conditions are, then shut it down. But if it's working fine and, and everything, give it a chance, because if you don't like homeless people, a lot of people don't like homeless people sleeping in the parks and on the streets, including myself. Well, now they'll have a place to, to sleep that we won't, you know, at least have that a lot, much alleviated. Thank you.
Can I, I wanted to respond to something you, you said, uh, Mr. Tom. You know, if they're not operating in the way they need to operate, then shut it down. Currently, bef, if this is not passed, there's nothing in our UDC that allows us to have any regulation over it. So, I think this truly is cleaning up a, a defect in our UDC. Um, it's not like they could open their doors tomorrow. We all know that. There's other issues that are outside the scope of this council, we have nothing to do with that. So, during that time where that is figured out and, and they determine whether they're able to get the access that they, that they seek, why not, as a community, come together and just talk about the things that we want it to have if, if it happens? I understand some people don't want it for any condition, I want, some people want it without any conditions, but that's not good government and that's not the way we're supposed to do things. I have said multiple times, just from feedback from people in the community, what are people's concerns? Well, fencing. Right now, I can't, we can't require that there's a fence. Well, that's a condition I think they've already said that they would do. How about add that as a condition? That there's 24-hour security, that there's cameras, these are the kinds of things that we can hold them to task if they're doing it, and it's not just about Northlake Coalition. It's about, right now, someone else could do a, an, a homeless shelter under the present guidance if we don't change it, and then where there's multiple homeless shelters, and do we even have the need for that many rooms? I don't know, but we're fixing a problem, because it is a problem, and I think that the right way to do it is to address the concerns of the community, so everybody feels heard and they're able to have us put in writing the things that they want a homeless shelter to have in place, to protect the community and the people that live there.
Yes, and let me also say this. So, as we sit today, homeless shelter is not listed as a permitted use, a conditional use, an accessory use, and allowed use anywhere. What this does is this creates what is a homeless shelter and where does it fit in to those various zones. So, it doesn't exist now. There's no listing of homeless shelter in any of the uses.
My name is Cindy Childress and I live at 3 Norbrook Circle here in Hammond. I'm here because, six years ago, I was homeless myself, living in the streets of New Orleans, and I went into a homeless shelter. I was in addiction for, for, over 45 years. They took me in, they provided all of the things that the homeless coalition here in, in Hammond wants to do. They helped me get a job, they got me clean, I went into treatment. Now, I'm a homeowner here in Hammond. I'm a productive person in this community, I vote. We can't throw homeless people away. Now, people, there's some people that choose to be homeless, yes, I know, but there's some that do not choose to be homeless because of the economy, the COVID, all these things that are, the job situations, people just not having what they need to get back to where they need to be. And this is what this homeless coalition, I mean, this homeless shelter did for me in New Orleans, and that's why I feel here in my new community, that I've lived here over six years now, that I want to help, to help other people. And where do we fit in? Homeless people don't fit in. But we're able to recycle a plastic bottle, but we're not willing to recycle people, have the compassion and love for other people, to do for them what was done for me. Where is that love? Why do we not care about one another? I'm just saying that we, it is possible. I'm living proof. I, I, I help other women now, that are, that was in the same condition that I was in, and those that don't want it, don't never know that, just like that, in a second, anybody in this room could be homeless and not even know, just like that, and lose everything that you have and end up on the streets. So, I'm just asking that people look at this homeless shelter. It's not a bad thing. It's a great thing for our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Jean Voorhees, 1201 South Holly Street in Hammond. I support the homeless shelter. I think one of the problems, one of the issues that has driven so many of us to come here, we have attended countless planning and zoning board meetings, we've attended just about every time you guys have mentioned the homeless shelter. We're here, we're not eating our dinner with our families, we're putting everything else aside, we're putting on long pants in hot weather, we're, we're doing everything we can, trying to, to get a handle on this. And what I feel is missing is any kind of, a clear plan as to how we can get from our fear, which is this unknown conditional use. Y'all might come up and decide that we need to have, have clowns, you know, in every corner of the property, and we don't know. Obviously, there, there are legitimate things that the city needs to be comforted about, to be assured of in writing, that these, these are requirements, logical, reasonable things. And, and I know that some of, a lot of the fears on the, the part of the people that do not support the shelter are, are fears that I think have been addressed, but they don't know it. There, there has not been a venue that would make it possible for people to get together. You know, this is not a good format, having three minutes for people to come up, what are we gonna say? You know, it's a very complicated thing. What we need is a meeting, I'm speaking for myself. I think we need a time set aside for the council members in an informal setting to get together, maybe one meeting with the supporters and one meeting with the, the people who do not want it, and, and listen and take notes and try to come out through a rational, calm process with a list that everybody can agree with. These are reasonable expectations for a homeless shelter, and I think the temperature of the whole conversation would go down significantly if we had some idea that, you know, the fear is, that something, somebody who really doesn't want it is gonna come up with some requirement that they cannot meet and use that as a dirty pool way to knock them out. That's the fear. And until we get some clarity about what those things will be, what those conditions will be, you're gonna have this room full of people that don't want to be here, sitting and listening, wishing they were somewhere else, and y'all, you know, you bought into coming to your council meetings, but we haven't. Uh, I don't mean to be facetious, but I hope there would be a clear process where we can sit down together and calmly go through what you feel are reasonable requirements and give us, give us something in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Wise, corporate, uh, 43442 Enterprise Lane in Hammond. Um, I just wanted to address the, the subject of tonight's, um, proposed ordinance. First off, I will tell you that conditions are absolutely appropriate for this project. Um, and just because we oppose this project doesn't mean that we don't have compassion for our fellow man, or that we don't want to see people get the help that they need. These types of projects have big implications for communities, long-lasting implications. With all due respect, it's just not an issue of shutting it down and turning off a switch. If you amend the code, conditions, I think, are an essential part of it, and conditions that address, yes, the fears and concerns we have about how this is gonna affect our families and our livelihoods. This is our community, we have a right to feel like we need to be protected. However, I would like to address the fact that the way that the city planner addressed it was that the allowed space for this was in a highway zone. Now, it's clear from his letter to you that he was trying to reach a compromise in this situation. He recognized the, the debate and the discussion that we're having here tonight in our democracy, but, um, I would suggest to you that highway zones are set aside for very specific purposes. And if you read the definition online, it's, it's to serve the traveling public. These areas are reserved for commercial operations that serve these interests, hotels, community, um, restaurants, repair facilities for vehicles. A homeless shelter in this location is misplaced. I'm sorry to say that these folks that bought this business, this location, they shouldn't have done it. They didn't inform the mayor or the city council before they, they went out and did it, and just because they own the property and leaped out there doesn't mean that this community has to live with that. I don't believe it belongs in this spot. It's up to you to define the scale of our project, our, our problem here in this community and find the appropriate place for it, but it's not at the corner of South Morrison. Um, Councilman Wells, you addressed the fact that we need to start collecting for garbage a couple of weeks ago when I was here, because you need revenue for District 3. There's only a handful of places in the entire nation where coast-to-coast interstates intersect. Hammond's one of them. This whole area could be a thriving economic center of our future and provide that tax revenue that you're looking for. We let this facility go in this spot where it's misplaced, this will be a 30-year mistake that our children will have to address with some future council. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Gray, 603 East Robert Street, and you've all gotten the letter from me about the fact that for 20 years, I've been working with St. Vincent de Paul. We're the group that first hear from the homeless, and when we hear from a homeless person, who do we call but the people who know how to do it? The homeless coalition. The gentleman just said that the highways are for travelers. The homeless are traveling. They, like Jesus, have no place to lay their head. Right down the street from this property, the old Calway Inn is now being transferred into a Motel 6. I visited there this week, one wing is not renovated, and I met with a couple of homeless people from Hammond, a man and a woman incapable of working, and people on the street have been feeding them and housing them. Our group was able, able to give them another week, and I was thinking, if this property were ready, I could have sent them there. I think the gentleman who just spoke is, raised an issue that is also important with me. The issue is, you keep talking about the difference between group living and homeless shelters. I also worked on the board with the House of Serenity. That was a homeless shelter. That was a place you would not want to send anyone. We spent a summer getting rid of the bedbugs in the House of Serenity. You would go into the men's dorm and there'd be eight men sleeping in the same room, and one young man who was 16 wouldn't come out from under the sheet because he was so embarrassed to be there. Women and children and grandmothers were all sleeping in the same room. The new model in America is not a homeless shelter, it's a motel, and this will be run as a motel, a beautiful motel. If you haven't been in the rooms yet, I want to tell you, they look like the Mont Leone in New Orleans. They're beautifully outfitted and they have, uh, microwaves and refrigerators. A family could be there while the homeless shelter gives them the counseling they need. This will in no way affect the entrance to Hammond, Louisiana on South Morrison, and I hope you'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Deborah McQueen, 1002 Magazine Street. I, I, I just wanna piggyback on what the gentleman said, because my concerns are like his, but first of all, let me say that, um, the tractor and supply place is not for anything meeting at the intersections of the highways and byways, so there are other things out there, but forget about that. I'm glad I live in America, and the reason I'm glad I live in America is because my brother who just left the podium can have his opinion and his perspective, and I can have mine. I'm very respectful, I don't like to be disrespectful, but when there's something I'm passionate about, I'ma knock on the door. Whether you let me in or not, it's up to you, because we all have different passions. But when something is very important to me, I'm coming through the door. So, I hear a lot of things going on tonight, conditional use, and of course, with, with something this scale, this is, we're in a discovery mode with this, of course we want conditions, of course we do. And I, and I know that Cornerstone understands that, of course we do. I think all that's gonna be worked out. I think I heard you guys say tonight, we're just doing feelers, seeing what the public is saying, but we are gonna work out these issues. I know we are. I like to say to everybody, though, those who are for it, those who are against it, I like to say, in America, you have a right to be against it if you wish, you have a right to be for it if you wish. I'm for it. I also heard the gentleman say, his fears and concerns for his family are on his mind. My fears and concern for my family is on my mind, because I have a lot of family members that are barely, barely, two, 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 two bad weeks, two bad weeks, and if somebody didn't take them in, they'd be homeless. I work with people every day, every day, who, they're not on drugs, they work, they work hard, they try, but due to illegal rent- But due to illegal rent increases that we had going on for the last six years, people increased in people's rent three times in one year, pricing them out, the privatization of America. You can't even go find an apartment now because management companies are running them. So it's very hard for the people out there. I'm not blaming anybody for people's conditions. I'm a fixer. If I see a problem, I want to address the problem, I want to fix the problem. I just want to fix the problem. We feel like we need this for this community, the people in this community. There are a lot of concerns about the area, there are a lot of concerns about the safety. I'm pretty sure that they're going to address every condition that is reasonable. But we don't, we don't want it to be unreasonable, because this thing is not going away. Too many people need it. If, if, if you were to poll, which I'm, which I'm going to do, if you were to poll this whole city right now, and I would say, I know you live with your grandmother, but do you have your own house? We have homeless families, we have so many homeless families. I've traveled to New Orleans and Baton Rouge and everywhere trying to help people, trying to place people. And they, they come out like the lady who spoke, because if you give them a hand up, seven out of 10, not 10 out of 10, we already know, three out of 10, but seven out of 10. So my concern is like his when he says the fear for the children and his family, my fear. I do a summer program every summer with children who've never been out of the neighborhood. And, and I know if I wasn't doing some things, they wouldn't get done. So we, we want the pro, we, we want this. This is, this is going to be, and not just homeless. When you say homeless, a picture comes in people's minds of somebody somewhere walking the street and pushing buggies. No, no, that's not the face of homelessness anymore. That's not it. So we, we want this to happen. I, I can guarantee you, 60, 65% of the citizens want this to happen. But we also want to be respectful, we want to work with the council, we want to work with the administration to address everybody's concerns. I heard the lady say, let's find a way, please, to address those that are far, those that are against, those that are in the middle. If we can do it at election times, we can do it now. We, we fight, we fight like Jerusalem and Palestine, excuse me, everybody, over silly stuff. We're talking about people here. I deal with them every day. We're talking about real people, real children, real children with real single parents who, who can't make it and working, not on drugs, not pushing carts, working every day, trying to make it. So my time, I'm sure my time is up. I, I listened to, I forgot his name, he owns the Big Wheel, I listened to him, because I watch every meeting. If I'm not here, I'm watching. I listened to him, he spoke about 20 minutes, very passionate, about three months ago, about 20 minutes. Spoke from here about 10, went sit in his seat, spoke 12 more. He was very passionate about his opinion. There's nothing wrong with that. We shouldn't get mad that somebody has an opinion. I'm not mad if you disagree with me. This is America. But I just want to make my position very clear. The people that I support, we support it. And I don't know anything else to do but, but just fight for what it is I know we need. But I'm always going to be respectful. I'm not, I don't fight dirty. I'm always going to be respectful, because I work for him, so I'm always going to be respectful. But at the same time, I'm always going to be serious in fighting. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your consideration in letting me speak.
Charlie Slino, 42254 East I-55 Service Road. A lot of people think I'm the bad guy here. I help people in and out every day. And this magnitude of this facility that wants to come here, Mayor, you're doing a great job coming in from the entrance, building the entrance from the truck stop entrance, coming in this way into City Hammond. This is the entrance coming in from New Orleans. One day, I hope you will assist and get, you know, justify coming in that way, because I'm sure that's going to be a main corridor one day coming in there, because we do. That is the first entrance coming into Hammond. People come in here to spend nights in hotels. They come here to have fun with our festivals and fairs and things like that here. So it's very important for that entrance. My deal is with the entrance being a main entrance of this around businesses that brings in tax revenue. This is going to be a business that's going to come in here, that's going to be depending on funding from the government, funding from the state. Like you were saying earlier, no offense to you, if the funding runs out and the people are here in the facility and they don't have any more funding, where do they go? If they brought people here into this area from other places and they're here and there's no more funding, any of the people that talked out here, Ms. Beth, would you give any, if they can't afford to pay some, how much money are you going to give out of your own money? Okay, they're talking about millions of dollars-
Sir.
-to be, that's fine. Sorry.
Thank you.
They have got me in a corner before, too.
Talk to me.
But there's millions of dollars that's going to be there for, for operations for us. If they get funded out and don't get the money coming, they'll have to leave, pick up and leave. Then where does the people go? If they brought more people into the area, that's more people that comes in the area, whether they're homeless or need help, I know they need help. But at the end of the day, I just don't think this is the place for the facilities for it. There is other places, they could have took $6 million, $4 million, and $5 million, went out in the middle, somewhere else in Tangipahoe Parish, in a rural area where it is not in the neighborhood, it's not around other people, and built a fine facility that could house this to help people like this. And the problem is, if they went out there, you know, they, they think the building is sufficient for it, but it needs a lot of remodeling. It is a old building. But I just want to say, you know, the businesses around there, we worried about more folks coming into the area, that's not going to be for businesses. It's going to be panhandling and just worried about people up and down the street. That's all I got to say. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Stapleton, and I'm the Executive Director of the Northlake Homeless Coalition. I'm here to speak specifically about our proposal for the Cornerstone project.
Just give me your address, please.
My personal address or that office?
Office is fine, yeah.
42309 South Morrison Boulevard.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak specifically about our proposal, because I don't think that everyone has had an opportunity to hear our presentation. But we serve individuals and families experiencing homelessness or housing instability in Tangipahoe Parish. There are four components: 50 motel rooms to be used as temporary or interim housing, 24 one-bedroom affordable apartments with wraparound services for persons with disabilities, a resource center serving as a social service hub to move people towards self-sufficiency, and a clinic to provide onsite medical and behavioral health services. There are many paths that lead to homelessness. It could be a natural disaster, a fire, an unforeseen medical emergency, a domestic violence incidence, or even an unexpected expense like a car repair. More than two-thirds of the people that we assess are experiencing a housing crisis due to an economic reason. This makes sense when you look at the data. Approximately 35% of the households in Hammond live below the poverty line. 67% of the renters in Hammond are cost burden, meaning they spend a significant percentage of their income on housing expenses. The largest demographic of people living in poverty in Hammond are women aged 55 to 64, followed by women between the ages of 18 to 34. So the people experiencing the highest rates of poverty are older women and women of childbearing age. These are the folks that we often refer to as homeless, as the hidden homeless, who are sleeping in vehicles or blighted or unsafe housing. There are also people who experience homelessness because of physical and/or behavioral health issues. Approximately one-third of the people we assist fall into this category, meaning that their homelessness is not caused by a temporary or economic situation. These folks need ongoing intensive supportive services to maintain staple housing. The Cornerstone project and the property purchased for the project are uniquely suited to meet each of these needs. For non-disabled individuals and families, the motel rooms can be used to provide temporary housing while also providing intensive case management services and workforce development opportunities, so that they can resolve barriers quickly and permanently be rehoused. The apartments are for people who need ongoing wraparound services to maintain housing. Thank you.
I've never spoken in front of a bunch of people before in my life, and so I'm a little nervous. I am one of them older women. I just made 60 on the 15th.
Ma'am, could you give us your name, please?
I am homeless, not because I don't try to go to work. I was working at Ross and Wallace Paper Products through Advantage Resourcing and did my probationary period with them almost two years ago. And I was doing a probationary period with the company, Ross and Wallace Paper Products, and they had to cut back. So I'm on their probationary period, so yeah, I got the boot, along with their, three of their full-time employees. And that's why I'm homeless, you know? It's this economy. What can I say? You know, we're, we're trying, we're putting our effort into it. I'm not a felon, I have all my legal documents, I raised a child. You know, it's just, the economy's just failing. And you can put my name down as a volunteer to help any way possible that I can, to put my time in, into this. I don't know what I can do, it's my first time doing this, like I said, so please put my name down on, you know, what I can do to help this process, whatever it may be. I mean, I'd love to sit and do a personal conversation with any of you, or all of you at the same time. I'm a Christian-hearted woman, I don't do drugs, I don't know what more I could say. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a giver. When I was working at Ross and Wallace, I was making really good, and I'm trying to get back on with them. I, I was contacting Ms. Donna today with Human Resources, and, but I had to leave a message, she's always busy. But when I was working there almost two years ago, I was making very well, and I was giving money out to help people out. I am a giver. So whatever I can do to help this process, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Jones, and my address is 306 North Cherry Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. I am a licensed clinical social worker who has worked with Northlake Homeless Coalition in several different capacities, in different, different positions that I've held with the state throughout the years. I have worked with the Homeless Coalition to place homeless families at the hotel with which we are struggling to figure out if, what's going to happen with it, but they've act, homeless, we've placed homeless families in these areas for years through this, through this corporation or through this nonprofit agency. So they, these families have existed, these families have been served by this agency for, I don't know how long you guys have been around, but I've been working with them for about a day. Well, I've been with the state for a decade, so maybe five, six years. And I've seen the incredible assistance with which it has given to the people that I work with. I have seen the incredible hoops that, the strict criteria as well in which these families need to be able to qualify for these services in order to be served by this agency to receive the assistance and the case management. And I just think it would be such an incredible benefit. I have had, on so many occasions, had to look for homeless shelters in New Orleans or Baton Rouge for families whose children have gone to school here for, for a decade and they have nowhere else to go other than Baton Rouge and New Orleans, and then we're displacing families from here elsewhere, and it really stinks, and it's really hard to watch that happen. And I think that's really all I got, but I've just, I know how much of a benefit this could be to this community in ways that we aren't really looking at. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Duncan, I live at 229 Wildwood Drive here in Hammond. I promise you, I'm not going to be as eloquent as the lady Cindy who spoke earlier. My son is an attorney here in town, I am not, so I'm not, I don't understand some of the quagmire issues that Tom was talking about when it comes to zoning and whatever. Just it's, my heart is in this. I came to Hammond when I was a student at Southeastern in 1967. I fell in love with the university, I fell in love with the city. It was a, a small town that cared for people, that provided for people, and the mayors and the councils kept the city growing and beautiful. Today, because of past councils and past mayors and this mayor and this council, Hammond continues to be a city that loves people and cares for people and that provides for people. And it's a city that I am so proud of. I have a friend that when he introduces me to his friends, he said, this is Bob Duncan. He's the, he's the ambassador for Hammond, because I talk so wonderfully about the city. I just want to say that, you know, almost 15% of the homeless people are veterans. A significant percentage of the homeless people are women who have been abused by their husbands. They're on their streets, often with their children, living in cars or wherever they can live. And if Hammond cannot provide for these people and care for these people like you have done in the past with other resources, I'm going to give up my job as ambassador for Hammond. I'm going to be ashamed of Hammond. So, and I do agree with you a lot, Carly, about, you know, we do need to have conditions. I do understand that. There needs to be security, there needs to be resources that are promised to these people. There needs to be ways that these people can be removed if necessary, you know? And I, I support all of that. But the bottom line is, like I said, without understanding the zoning and some of the laws, the bottom line is, please support this and let it be built right where it's supposed to be built on Morrison. I heard some reasons why they don't want it there, but I didn't really hear any reasons why it shouldn't be there. So again, please, please give me and the people of Hammond and the people that I love your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Belinda Hostetter, and I'm asking permission from the Hammond City Council to speak for three minutes. I am not a resident of Hammond. I looked in the guidelines and I did not see that a non-citizen of Hammond would not be allowed to speak. I'm a resident of Ponchatoula. I live within very close proximity to the building, which is for the proposed homeless shelter. Do I have permission to speak?
Great.
Thank you. My name's Belinda Hostetter. My husband Bruce and I live at 15496 East Hoffman Road in Ponchatoula. Our concerns, I think, are valid regarding the proposed homeless shelter. As Mr. Duncan did speak so eloquently, I have been a resident of Tangipahoe Parish since 1955, living in Hammond and living in Ponchatoula. I am familiar with homeless shelters. We lived in, within very close proximity to the Serenity House Shelter in Ponchatoula. My attendance here is to express which I feel are valid concerns, but then I do not have a full knowledge. I spoke with Mr. Penapinto, I have read articles that have been printed in The Advocate, as well as The Hammond Daily Star. My concern about the proposed homeless shelter, of course, is the definition of a shelter. I have read, and then the lady today from North Lake Coalition, said that this proposed shelter is for residents of Tangipahoe Parish. Therefore, I wonder if law enforcement would, or some type of social service agencies such as St. Vincent's De Paul's would become aware of a situation where a family is homeless, but they are not residents of Tangipahoe Parish, would this facility serve them? My concern, my husband and I's major concern is, and we don't know all the answers, we haven't been able to really find out the answers, will, if this facility has federal government funding, will this facility also house undocumented migrants or illegal aliens crossing our border? Will it turn into something such as that in addition to a homeless shelter? These are my concerns. These are my concerns, and hopefully, we can receive further clarification on this point as well. As far as the location, I have been advised, and I do not know if this is valid, but that a couple purchased property out on North Baptist Road to develop the Old Quad Area Veterans Home into a homeless shelter. I'm not sure. I was told that. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public peril, four four three one West Pleasant Ridge in Hammond. For the last twenty-five years, I've had a business on Club Deluxe less than a mile from the facility or the location where the Northlake facility is planned. I'm going to talk about the ordinance, and I probably won't take three minutes. But I think what we, what you have, what's been provided and presented is probably a start. I don't think it's anywhere near a comprehensive or a complete ordinance that's really needed. I, I've heard it said that from both sides, that people want to know what the conditions are. I would fall into that category. I'd want to know what kind of conditions they're going to be in each direction. I think the definition alone lacks a lot. There's no mention about a maximum number of residents, a minimum number that fits into the definition. There's no requirements or, or limits for the amount of space required per residence. I guess that would be a condition. Recreational facilities, there's just a lot lacking, I think, in what we have so far. I think it's an important issue. There's a lot of people here that feel strongly about it in both directions. I think the council should take its time, get this right, get it very right. I also question highway district zoning. I, for some reason, this type of operation, this type of business is not, to me, consistent with what goes in a highway district. Where it goes, I don't know, but that doesn't seem appropriate for me. There's also some, some discussion in the planners' comments about federal law and how that could affect the ordinance and/or the facility. I think he leaves that inconclusive and unanswered. I think that's an important issue. You get the federal government or HUD involved in this thing, and there's going to be all kinds of extra issues that none of us planned for, that are going to be before us. So I think the federal government and the HUD issue needs to be thoroughly vetted, and the right protections and guidelines put in the ordinance with respect to what involvement the federal government might have. And finally, I'd like to mention that I don't think there's any obligation on this council or the city to do anything in a hurry to get this thing done. The fact that this real estate has already been purchased, not your problem. It's not the city's problem. It's not the residents' problem. So I hope that y'all will take the time and thoroughly review everything. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Gay Anderson, one oh seven North Spruce Street in Hammond. And as you all consider conditional use, which I don't think anyone would ever argue, that there shouldn't be some reasonable conditions set in an organization in an operation such as this. But I hope you'll consider that currently, we have approximately a hundred homeless people in this immediate area, and they are regularly scattered around into motels, lots of them. And they stay a little while, and then they move on. In those motels, there are no services offered to help guide them. There is no accountability. There is no on-site security. So those places that are already operating all over the parish seem to be less safe and less accountable than the proposal that I'm hearing for this particular shelter. And I have had a lot of direct contact with homeless people in the past several months. And I would second the concept that they're not the stereotypical homeless person that you think of, that you see in the movies, of the filthy man walking down the street, yielding a knife, who is muttering to himself. Those people don't even have their act together enough to organize themselves enough to get to a shelter. And this shelter, from what I understand, is single-room occupancy. It's not a giant facility with bunk beds like we also have seen in the movies. So I hope you all would consider the fact that as now, as things stand, there are unhoused people moving around the city to motels, and I could name them, but you already know which ones they are. And in this case, with this proposal, we could centralize people and guide them through the process of getting back on their feet. The women with children, the grandmother that I met who lives in her car, there's a business owner who is kind enough to let her park her car in the shade at his business. But there are, there are a lot of people you wouldn't suspect. I recently met two homeless people at the shower ministry at my church, and those two people have full-time jobs, but they don't earn enough money to afford housing. So the services offered, the peace and quiet offered for a little while would help get them off the streets and help them become productive. So when you consider your conditions, I hope that you'll consider all of that. And I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to speak and for considering this. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but I'm glad you're in them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pat Monaleon, one eight eight five six Hank Drive in Ponchatoula. Is it okay if I ask these couple questions? Thank you. I was, you know, listening to, in the beginning, about the, the conditions, and I, I just have some questions about, about that, that process. What is the process for determining the conditions surrounding this project?
That's going to depend on the application.
And what application are we talking about?
There's no application we're talking about tonight.
No. Well, who makes the application?
Northlake Homeless Coalition.
Okay. So, so my understanding is that Northlake has not made an application?
There is no application or consideration from this particular project.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We expect one, but...
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my next question is, who is involved in the decision-making process when an application is made?
There's their city staff, which would then go to Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation, then come back to the city council for a final approval.
Okay. And will there, will there be any input from folks in the community regarding the conditions that will be decided?
Yes, there'll be multiple public hearings at both Planning and Zoning and with the city council.
So the people will have an opportunity, sorry, will have an opportunity to have input in the conditions for this project?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Kent Carroll. Address, six oh three Rue St. Martin here in Hammond, where I've been a resident for sixty-six years. I'm third generation here. My grandfather was a city clerk. Great uncle was one of the leading founders of Southeastern. Lucius McGee founded, well, that was nineteen twenty-five, and he went before the Louisiana Legislature and Huey Long. And he got the vote, because he was on the school board, this medical doctor. And anyway, I've been here a while. Just a couple points to let you know, the road that goes by the location of the hotel, open by a big wheel, that's, it looks to me like a service road, but it's a dead end. The point is, it's a dead end. There's nothing, you have big wheel and stuff and things over there. But that's it. Stops. Another thing, this is not the first time a homeless shelter has been built. And these people that have to follow federal guidelines, they pretty well know what they're doing, as well as for the state. State has its rules, and we need those rules. They are good things. They know what they're doing. Finally, oh, funding. People concerned about the funding, running out for a homeless shelter, that's not likely to happen. I'm in communication with an entity that does grants for certain things, and they pretty much are in agreement. This is around the world, not just in one particular country, but they do things all over the world, such as funding. And if you look at the New York Times, just after Katrina, they gave a hundred million dollars to bring back this area. Maybe the front page news and the pictures were on it. I thank you for your time and hope you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ma'am, to answer your question about agencies that are named as potential starting points for drafting conditions, one is the Louisiana Department of Social Services, and also the other is Louisiana Balance of State Continuum of Care that ought to be involved in it.
I promise I'll be very brief. My name is Angela Tyrone. I live at four oh six Uwet Road. I'm one of the people that was homeless after Hurricane Katrina and came back to Hammond after being at Southeastern. So I agree with Mr. Duncan that I fell in love with the city, and it's the reason I came back and was so excited to be back here and still am. One of the things I do want to say, I am a licensed clinical social worker and retired and have worked in this community with the Florida Parish Human Services Authority for the past seven years. One of the things I do want to say is that homeless people are around here. After the first meeting I attended here, I was at Circle K one day, and a guy was sitting in, and he was literally living outs, in his car outside of Circle K. And I'm sitting here thinking, "How can I get a picture of this man?" And he raised his hand, and I went, "I don't want to embarrass him." So I just took a picture of him sitting in his car. So I do have that picture. That, that's a reality of somebody homeless that's, that's really around here. The other thing is, I wanted to say is that I can appreciate that the business around there doesn't, is concerned about where the location is. I look at that totally different. The last place that we need to be thinking about putting a homeless shelter is out in a rural community where there is no access to transportation or no access to resources. When I first heard about this project was in the paper, and my, I was so thrilled to hear about its location, because if you really think about this location, it is right down the street from the police department. It is right down the street from the health department. It is right down the street from the social security department. It is in very close vicinity of the hospital. I don't think you're going to find a better location. The other thing is, is that it's not even in a, in a residential community. So you don't have residents jumping up and down and acting crazy because you're going to move a homeless shelter in their community. I think this is an excellent opportunity for this city to grab hold of it, get behind it, and run. Because I'm going to tell you, you will put yourselves on the map, because it is a needed service in this area. And the ser, the wraparound services that they're, they have proposed to provide are needed services. People are already providing those services, but in different kinds of ways, where, but with them all being located in the same location. Y'all, the people that are homeless in this area not only live right here in the city limits of Hammond, they are living within Tangipahoe Parish. I don't know if y'all have been to Kentwood lately, but Kentwood is in Tangipahoe Parish, and there's a lot of homeless people in Kentwood, you know? And we need to be able to provide for the transportation for people to get to services. The cheapest transportation right now we have is a bus, which is, services are very limited there. But this is an area that could be real, very easily incorporated into the current places. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're moving back to, oh, sorry, I didn't see you coming up.
My name is Ronald Gilbert. I'm a retired veterinarian from the Hammond area. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-one. Four seven two four nine Monticello Drive. I actually hadn't planned on talking today, but I've been listening to the comments.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure. Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe I'll get closer. If you'd have told me a year ago I would be up here talking about homelessness, I would, had told you you were crazy, because I didn't know anything about it. All I knew about homelessness is what I saw on TV, seeing some people under the interstate in New Orleans, seeing the problems in San Francisco, that type of thing. But our church, under the leadership of Donna Gay Anderson, has started a shower ministry, and I've been working with that and consequently have met a number of homeless who have come in and have been really surprised by these people. They're not what I expected at all to see. And consequently, we actually have gotten involved with a homeless lady. She actually was the one who came up here and talked a little while ago, Chris. And through her, working with her, we found out how difficult a process it is for these people. You know, it's easy to sit and say, you know, "Well, you haven't worked in two years. You know, there's plenty of jobs out there. You see signs everywhere." That might be true of you or me, but it's difficult for somebody, it's very difficult and almost impossible for somebody who's homeless. They, I'm an employer as well, so obviously if somebody walks into my office and is looking for a job, I'm going to want to know references and where they live and all of that. And it's hard for somebody who walks in and says, you know, "I live behind the woods behind Walmart." It's not something that, you know, is going to put you high on the list of somebody you'd want to hire. Secondly, to get services, we've been working with Chris, basically moving her from campsite to campsite. She's right now currently living in state parks in a tent, and she can stay there for two weeks, and then she has to move again. So we move her to a different state park. During that process, we've been trying to work with HUD, trying to get housing for her, low-cost housing, because the first thing you almost really need to get a job is a place, you know, of residence. And so this is, these are the problems these people deal with that, just a casual person like me on the street don't, don't realize. But it's been, and it's been a chore we've gone through. She told me today that she has to go tomorrow, and she's got three more sets of forms she has to fill out. And, and again, we're driving her there and back and moving her around and getting her to the place she needs to be. She's, you know, she's fortunate in that respect, but so many of these people aren't. They don't have anybody to, to do all this for them and help them, get them to where they need to be. And that's what this facility would provide. This would give them a place, because they're in this closed environment, then the, the people who do this kind of thing can go there and set up tables, and they can come in, and they can do their interviewing, and do the things they need to do to get qualified for the services that are out there. There are services, but they just don't know about them or how to get to them. So this is, I look at this as a hand up, not a handout. And this isn't a homeless camp. This isn't going to be a place where there's going to be a bunch of tents, and, you know, you see these in the, you know, in, in the big... you see these in the, you know, in the big cities. This is a facility to help these people get off the streets, the ones that qualify for it. This is going to be a select group. This isn't, it's going to be taking in anybody, from, again, my understanding of it, they have to go through drug screening and other screening before they're even accepted into the, onto the property. And then it's a process to get them out. We also work with, our church works with a group called Family Promise. And it does basically the same thing. They work with, and these are primarily mothers with children, getting the mothers trained so they can get out and get a job and then move out of the, this program that they're on. And they bust them all over Tangierboho Parish, taking the kids to school and getting the parents to a place for training. And it's worked wonderfully. They have, they have taken a number of families and guided them off the street or out of their cars. And this is a program like that. So I just appealing to the city council to strongly give this serious consideration about what this is and also what it isn't. And that's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need to ask your permission to speak as well because I'm not a resident of this parish. However, I do work in the parish of Tangierboho. My name is James Swallow. I work with probation and parole. And just want to talk about the homeless situation in general, if that's all right? One of my jobs, I've been reentry program manager for the state of Louisiana. And a large part of what we do is finding housing for our folks when they have housing needs. Housing is, or the lack thereof, is a huge contributing factor to recidivism for us. Because the instability of housing, not knowing where you're going to go, not knowing where that next meal is going to come from, or having to go someplace that may not be the most beneficial, puts people back.
Can't hear me?
You can't hear as well? From the diaphragm? Yes, ma'am. So that housing instability can put you back into situations that may not be beneficial. Landing on somebody's couch or landing back with an ex-boyfriend or, these kinds of situations oftentimes put people in tough spots. Secondly, when we are looking for housing situations, and I work in lots of different areas of the state, but when we're looking for housing situations, group homes, anything like that, having something in a rural area is almost pointless. Because if somebody's down, they are not going to thrive in a rural area. They need to have access to transportation, they need to have access to bus routes. You can walk to a bus route from where this place is going to be. It may be a little bit of a walk, it's going to be hot, but you could do it. And the ability to get to work, and somebody else mentioned, you know, that as a path forward, unfortunately, the English language, I think, fails us a little bit here, shelter implies something like we see in New Orleans and in Baton Rouge. And I don't believe that's what this is. This is more of a path forward kind of situation. It's going to be working with them to get past this, much like the programs that DOC tries to offer. I need some more notes. I apologize. I think probably the last thing, besides the obvious need in the wake of something that is storming outside right now, in the wake of hurricanes, housing is beneficial. They're already housing, the corporation or Northlake Homeless Coalition is already housing people in your hotels, they're already doing it. This is going to centralize that location. And then lastly, something to think about here, as it stands right now, you've got a derelict hotel and one that was pretty much derelict right there. You could have something there or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not quite that tall. My name is Rachel Gill of Three Edwards Place. I had a question regarding the table 6.2 in the proposed ordinance. Am I correct in viewing the area where it has single-family residences would not be eligible for things such as group care living facilities, group living facilities, group care facilities, nursing homes? Those don't have the outlined box. Is there an avenue by which a conditional use or extended conditional use could be granted in any of these single-family residential zoning areas?
Hypothetically, but not, that's not as currently in the zone, in the UDC, would not be allowed in single-family residential areas.
You need to get a variance or rezoning or something.
Yeah, I mean, which would be difficult, difficult because of that type facility. But no, ma'am, it would not be in single-family residential areas.
Okay, because I had been here previously regarding a proposed group home in an RS-11 area. As amended, does this make a group home in those areas more difficult to pursue or easier to pursue than they were a year ago?
Well, it's not in that zoning, that RS-11.
Correct.
A zoning, it wouldn't.
They had requested a variant.
Yeah. So yeah, so it wouldn't be zoned for that, so it wouldn't be allowed there. Right here it's saying CH, it would be allowed in CH conditionally.
Correct.
Conditionally, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. Thank you.
Good afternoon or almost good night. Sherman Mack, former state representative attorney-at-law, resident of Livingston Parish. And I know I don't live in Hammond, but anyone who's had an in-depth conversation with me about my childhood knows how much I love Hammond and I love Ponchatan, I love Tangierboho Parish. I spent just about every weekend of my life up till I was 10 years old on South Olive Street with my grandmother. I walked to Woody's Grocery, I went to the Ritz Theater, I got my hair cut at Andy and Joe's. So I love Hammond, I love Tangierboho Parish. And I'm out here tonight to try to sway you one way or the other. As a former elected official and member of the legislature, as much as you know, I think Mr. Perilous said it right, take your time. That's what I'm asking you to do, as someone who really cares about Hammond. You know, I think a lot of the issue that some people are having is that they're scared. And a lot of times you're scared of what's unknown. I think that was a lot of the issue with the carbon sequestration issue that we had in Tangierboh Parish and Livingston Parish. I think it was dumped into people's laps before they really knew what was going on and was told it was a done deal. And I think that's a lot of the concern here tonight and a lot of concern in the community. So I'm just asking you to take your time. I know you're going to do the right thing, I know all of you. I know that y'all love Hammond as much as anybody sitting in this room. And I'm going to pray for you. And if I can do anything to assist you, do the right thing, I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving back to number one.
Good evening. David Fisher, 14172 Lindsey Drive, which is outside of the city limits, it is in the Happywood subdivision. Contrary to what people say, this is close to a residential area. That's behind the gold Catfish Charlie or the Brew and Brew, whatever you want, the Black and Brew that just opened in this place. So there are neighborhoods and there are people that live there, contrary to what's been said. Another thing that I would like to correct, in the Daily Star, it said that there are no illegals that come through Hammond. That is incorrect. I personally saw three buses at the Petro truck stop that were letting people go into the bathroom, do whatever it is they were doing. I don't know where they went after that, but if they find out that something's here, they're going to use it. And that's all I have to say.
Moving to number, number one.
Well, you've been trying to get to number one for me.
An ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond's budget for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond's Charter.
We have some amendments, I believe, some changes.
Well, yeah, where are we starting at?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Let me just give a little recap. Got me?
Yes.
So we introduced the budget on May 14th. We went into budget work session June 7th, where there was a lot of discussion that was had. This spreadsheet that you're looking at is a result of those discussions held at the budget work session. So typically what we have done is we'll go through this list, we could take it in pieces and parts or line by line to vote on. And any other changes, additions, we will add to the spreadsheet. We have Casey here, that he will be keeping track of all the tallies, every change that is made to provide the ending fund balance at the end of discussion. Once all that is done, at the end of the meeting for the final adoption, we'll need to vote for the budget in its entirety, as we've done in previous years. And so it's up to you guys to decide if you want to take it one by one, groups, for you guys to vote on. I will add that I did receive a couple of things after the budget work session. There was only one that I had a number for, so I only included what I had.
Yeah, what I was referring to was, we've been discussing for several years now and I wanted to make sure that it was, they had a line on here with the project and a price proposed for that improvement. That was the, there's the roads on Alida from a drainage improvement done a while back that the roads are all messed up and I've been in touch with Chuck about it. And he was supposed to put some money in there for the roads and drainage. And that's on Alida Street. And let's see, there was a new project, I just wanted it to be on there, that came up, was over there on 190 and Western Avenue. Coming off 190, the entryway improvement was to get some of those 18-wheelers off the road, it was backing up traffic. We went out there, looked at it, and there was supposed to be some designing going in there, so I wanted to make sure that they had that on the capital outlay. Doesn't have to be 24, 25, but it needed to be on 25, 26 or whatever, but I wanted to see some money there in actual project.
Okay.
That was one of them. And then the, let's see, Cecilia Street, that was supposed to be on there for a while now, Cecilia Avenue for a sidewalk over there, right behind Wendy's. And then, let's see, and then the Scanlon Ruin Carter Street was another project that's been talked about that I just wanted to, obviously it's not going to be this year, but I wanted to see it on there with some type of budget figure on there.
Okay, would you like me to get with Chuck?
Yeah, yeah, he was supposed to get something together on that. Let's see, 190 Rose Avenue, go away. Yep. Was there something else in that? I think I sent that email to you, Laura. Let me see, I want to make sure that I didn't forget something.
South Laurel?
South Laurel, yes. I just wanted to double-check. I know they moved it up. I wanted to make sure it went to West Coleman, down to West Coleman. So I wanted to make sure they had enough money in that one. That one's been a while talked about on South Laurel.
That one's number 11, that's Laurel Morris to Thomas.
Yeah, yeah, they.
For 75,000.
Yeah, let's see, I thought I saw something on there, it might have been 140-something or, let's see. Sidewalk, okay, yeah, let's see. Yeah, I think that's what he was going to look at to see if it needed to be amended any. But yeah, the definitely Alida Street and the drainage over there was a huge one that had been talked about for several years now that I want to see here sometime very soon, so.
Is that the Villa West?
Well, Villa West is, that's Ruth St. Martin and Rue Delapay. That was another one on there that I wanted to see some money budgeted on there for that road, those two roads.
So it's two roads, Villa West and?
Yeah, Villa West has two roads in there. The Ruth Simone, it's a large subdivision, so obviously we're not going to do the whole thing, but Ruth Simone and Ruth Simone runs into Rue Delapay, that's an entryway to Villa West. And then the Ruth St. Martin is another highly-traffic road in Villa West. And then Alida Street is on the west side of town. And there was a drainage project that was done a while back that had to cut up the road because they had a mistake or something and it just made dips throughout the whole road,
Maybe on this one, should we touch base after we talked to Chuck and get some numbers?
Well, I mean, should have had some numbers, but yeah, I just, I want to make sure I see it somewhere on here with somebody, if he responded or said anything yet.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay, okay.
Sam, Nicholas, 3607, Highway 190 West, Hammond, Louisiana. Pertaining to Alida and all, they did come in there and did some drainage work right at the beginning. But now, about four or five years ago, I believe it was, whenever Chuck sent a crew of men through there and they laid out the, some of the sewers and stuff, and what they did, they, before they left, they came back and they must have, I guess they cut across Alida and every five or 10 feet, I guess about 10 feet, it's a bump, bump. Every, you know, every, from there all the way back to Tina Drive. So I don't know what, the city's come in a couple of times and I've seen they put little asphalt, but it doesn't last. So I'd like to, you know, present this to the council to approve this because I talked to the parish council and the city and the parish are supposed to work together with this. And Joey Mayhew is the parish council for me. I had contacted him and talked with him about it and he said it's up to the city. So I'm asking Sam to, you know, do what he could to get it done and hopefully the parish, I assume, they do all the blacktop for what I've seen. So I don't know why Joey is just kind of saying, everything is the city, you know? I pay city tax and parish tax. So, you know, I know, not only me, but all the people living in there, they're having that issue and, and like I said, it definitely needs to be resurfaced because it's, I mean, it's like bump, bump, bump when you're going all the way down.
Yeah, and I was able to get Tina Drive done and the plans were to get it going out to Alida. And I was hoping the parish of Alida would have been able to fit it in, but it wasn't able to get done, so that's why I want to make sure I put that on here to get that road complete going into Tina Drive.
I think the parish could probably participate in some of the money or whatever, I don't know. I mean, Mayor, you probably could talk to the people there, you know?
Parish didn't plan on doing any roadwork this fiscal year. They're trying to get all of their roadwork aligned together to get a better bid price in their next fiscal year, which starts January.
Yeah, well, it might take a year or two, but at least to get it on the agenda or something, you know?
Yeah.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Chuck, Laura, Chuck Spangler had sent us yesterday, I don't know if you were on it.
That project 1407 for Mary's Alley?
Yes, it's on there.
With all the different numbers.
That was given after the?
Right, but I'm saying, we're asking for numbers, but the numbers are here. Yeah. Laura, you were on it.
Yes, I was. I have it right here.
But it only, it's future work.
Oh, yes, I see it now here.
I think he highlighted Mary's Alley, now I overlooked the rest, I apologize for that.
Well, but the other ones look like it says add to future fiscal years and then the?
What's the Mary's Alley highlighted for in yellow for, and the other ones aren't?
That's a current-year project that has got a cost overrun.
Has it what now? Why is it in yellow? I'm sorry, what was it?
It was budgeted for 157. It came in at 415.
Oh, so it came over budget?
Yes.
And they just?
That's the difference.
Okay.
That's the current-year project.
Oh, I got you. And this is where now, Mary's Alley? What is this one?
That's in District 3.
What is it?
That's in my district.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, what they had did, it's a concrete road. And what they did, they put it out to do asphalt. And we had discussed it before and we never did sit down and talk about it. So now we're going back to doing it as a concrete road. So pretty much, and what this is what we discussed, every street in Hammond that is a concrete road, they always go back and do it in concrete. And so this one of the streets that's in my district, that's a concrete road that they wanted to do it in asphalt. But it don't make sense to do it in asphalt when the street calls for concrete. And so that's, that's how it ended up being, the budget ended up going up on it. So in the process of being Mary Alley, so this definitely, so this shouldn't even came up to the budget. This shouldn't even be a part of the budget, really, because this was a last-year project. So this definitely going to get done this year, right?
I want to apologize about that, though. I do see where Chuck made some projection numbers right here on some of the stuff, so he did send it over, so, so yeah.
And I want to apologize.
I just saw that, yep.
I took the highlighted line.
Okay.
That's my fault.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
These are future-year projects.
Yeah, I knew when it was going to be on 24, 25, but we've been talking about it for four years now and I don't see it, so I want to see it on here. And that's, that's, yeah.
I will add these.
On the, yep.
Weston Oaks. Weston Oaks entrance.
Yeah, that's on there as a-
Palmetto, Mooney to South Morrison.
Yeah, let's see.
Sidewalks, Celia, West Thomas to Old Baton Rouge Highway, sidewalk 66,000, drainage 200. Laurel Street, West Thomas to West Morris, sidewalk and drainage. Laurel Street, West Morris to Edwin Neil, sidewalk and drainage. Laurel, Edwin Neil to West Coleman, sidewalk and drainage. All estimated at 26,000 for sidewalks, 87 for drainage each. Scanlon, West Church to West Thomas, $360,000 for drainage. Richardson, West Church to West Thomas, 360 for drainage. Farnham, West Church to West Thomas, 360. Alida, 190, US 190 West to Brenda, drainage 348, asphalt 150. And those will all be moved to next year, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, not this one, yeah, thank you.
No financial impact in this budget year?
No.
Okay, so look.
Spiller Milton, 608 Susan Drive. I just wanted to ask if on that list of projects is a street light, a chovan and Old Baton Rouge Highway?
Mr. Spiller-
Energy is working on that, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I met with the rep, the energy rep, I met with him last week on it and I think he said what they're doing is putting a spotlight. They were having issues with where to connect the wire because there's not a pole of any kind in that area. So they're going to try to put a spotlight on one of those poles facing that way. Also brought up to him about checking with, if you notice those poles from the curve going all the way back on Old Baton Rouge Highway side, there's not one light, even on that little area, all the way to by Latto Lane roughly. And so I met with him last week, the rep, and he updated me. I think he said he talked to the mayor about the spotlight that he's going to try to put out there because there's an issue with the distance from where the road is to the nearest pole.
The issue is between going from a three lane to a two lane in the middle of a curve.
Yeah, and exactly, I'm 100%.
Third lane there, yeah. So there is a-
Their lighting coming.
Process taking place.
Yes, the lighting's coming, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So Ms. Laura.
Yes, sir.
Tom Anderson again from 127.
Mr. Tom. Mr. Tom.
Yes.
Me and Ms. Laura were speaking just now. Ms. Laura and I, we were speaking just now.
Oh, I thought you said, he said anybody else.
We're at the bar.
Yeah, no, you can go, go on, go.
Oh, I'm just-
Uh, go on, go.
Just real quick, because I've been meaning to do this for the last few years and I've just never got around to it. Budget time creeps up on me, but I just want to mention Zemurray Park and make this request on the record now for maybe next year or whenever, overlay the roadway in Zemurray Park. So Pete won't fall off his bicycle when I pass him up. That's a joke.
All right, thank you. Ms. Laura, so look, Mary Alley. What we stand as right now, this road, they're going to be, they're going to do this road today, right? This year?
We have 157,000 budgeted this year for that project. What I interpret from what Chuck sent me this morning, it is going to come in at 415.
Uh huh.
So it's, the cost is more than what is in the budget by 258,000.
Okay, now what he told me, and that's why when we talking to everybody-
I have to spoke to Chuck.
No, 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 you're fine, yeah. I got the same email as everybody else, but I talked to him before I came up here. He say this is a road that he requests that need to be started on now. So this is what he told me. So this is a road that was supposed to be done last year. And they made a mistake by assuming they're going to put asphalt on it. So they made the mistake, so it's a road that we need to work on now, even if we have to remove some things or take some things out the budget. But this is something that should have been done last year.
That's what we're going to need to do.
Yes, so-
Take it out and move something.
And we need to add 258,000 into this 24, 25 budget in order to do it because there's no money in the current budget where we sit right now, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is going to be on there tonight, right?
As you guys are voting on each of these items on the spreadsheet, we're going to be keeping a tally and keep you informed of what that ending balance will be with each, with each opportunity to inform.
Okay, so look, one more time, far as what you received from Chuck today, right? Could you read that out one more time, please?
So currently it's Mary's Alley, it's project 12407. It is budgeted in FY 23, 24, budget for 157. It came in at 415,000 cost to complete. And that is $258,000 shortfall for Mary's Alley.
Okay, now, here's more streets in there, on Natches, from Mooney Avenue to Palmetto Street, from Mooney Avenue to Palmetto Street and from Palmetto Street to Morrison. Look at that also.
So are we talking streets?
Sidewalks, I see.
Yeah, he had in there the sidewalks, he had in there the sidewalks and the drainage. You see why I'm talking about it?
The Palmetto, Mooney to South Morrison, that's for future years. $210,000 for sidewalks. We're doing this, in this current budget, we have Palmetto, Natches to South Morrison for 300,000.
Okay, he said, now this, I'm going by what he said again. So this is what he told me. He told me it's cheaper for us to do the whole project this year versus separating it because of the price going to go up next year.
So for Palmetto, currently we have 300,000 budgeted for drainage. The streets, the sidewalks is 210,000 for a future year. You're saying combine that for 510,000?
That's what Chuck said, that's what he told me today. So he was saying that's supposed to be put on this year project.
Well, you can say it, but we need to fund it. So do you want to move Mooney to South Morrison sidewalks to Mary? So we can get that concrete street done?
Okay, so we talking about moving?
And then we can take-
Palmetto Street, right? Which that's the street we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we can take that and move that to a fiscal year 25, 26.
Okay, yes.
That way you can get your-
That'll be fine.
And then we're short 48,000.
So maybe it's a good idea to recap our, what we discussed at the budget work session? If we need to move things around?
Yeah, we can do a recap, but I'm saying, I see something-
He said on remarks right there, that's what you're talking about, huh? Yeah, Palmetto work would be more cost-effective and accomplished at one time, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. And then it said Minnesota Park has an additional 6,000 vehicles per day. Yeah, these are his recommendations and is a dire need of attention. And then Linden is a logical pedestrian connection from West Church to West Coleman, several blocks needed. So that was another thing he recommended.
So, and for those two items, at the budget work session, we moved Linden back two years, or one year, to 25, 26 for sidewalks. Minnesota Park, we removed that in the budget work session. Minnesota Park Road and Linden sidewalks. We moved those, the Linden to 25, 26, and we removed the street at Minnesota Park completely.
Okay.
Now, I'm hearing we do not move those.
There's, we don't have the money to do all of these things unless somebody has some cuts. I think that's why, I mean, I cut Linden sidewalks, A, for the budget and two, because the person whose house it's in front of said they didn't want it, so they need more time. Minnesota Park got cut because I think it was such a big line item and there were other things that Councilman Wells preferred in his district. So I get that they're needed, everything's needed.
Minnesota Park is crucial.
I agree with that.
Shopping, but with the parish and Mr. Wells, the other Councilman Wells with the parish in your district not approving any money till their next fiscal year. If we approved it in our next fiscal year, they should hopefully split the costs with us to do Minnesota Park. So that's something to consider. If we're not doing it now, they will have to talk to Robbie and then you need, you know, we need to talk to Councilman Wells because it's his district. My understanding is he has about $900,000 or so to do things in his district. Hopefully, since they're not going to spend their money till their next fiscal year, our fiscal year starting July 1, we need to put some funds into 25, 26 for Minnesota Park if we're not going to do it now, which would be about $250,000 in the next year's fiscal budget. You okay with that?
Yeah, so, so what are you saying, so this year?
Saying this year Minnesota Park was pulled off, but that's fine because their fiscal year starts January, ours starts next month. So we wouldn't get, they don't get to their road overlay until the end of the year anyway. So we could put that 250-plus thousand dollars in our next year's budget for Minnesota Park and we're just going to have to patch it.
So are you saying do A, B, and C? You saying do B, Minnesota Park next year, and what about A and C?
Well, I mean, it's off the books, we should do it now, but we don't have the funds and the parish won't give us any funds from my understanding until their next fiscal year. So yes, we move Minnesota Park till the next fiscal year, 25, 26.
Does that open enough money for A and C?
No, that's already been pulled. But we need, as you said, you needed some money on your next fiscal year budgets. This needs to be put in on the next fiscal year's budget with the cost sharing with the parish and Lionel Wells.
Okay, so we're going to add $250,000 to Minnesota Parkway?
For the next fiscal-
For next year.
25, 26.
No financial impact this year. This year we've already taken off the 530,000. Putting 250,000 into next year's budget.
So back to Mary's Alley, this road. If we move Palmetto to 25, 26 fiscal year, 210. Move it to next year, we take that 2 in, 210 added to Mary's Alley and we're still short 48. For everyone in the audience, this is what we usually do at our budget meeting when we get together prior to this meeting. Usually we come here and we just approve. So we're in our budget session. Thank you for your patience.
I was just going to make the suggestion, maybe we read through the amendments, since this is just the public hearing. We read through the amendments, just so everyone here, we have everybody a chance to have a comment on them if they want. Nobody has any comments, then we actually move into the agenda and we are able to discuss where things are and we vote on them then. This is really just for people to say what projects they agree to or don't agree to or not. And I would also propose that we reverse the order again and do the homeless shelter when it's time to vote and then do the budget after, because this can get a little long in the tooth here.
So Mr. Mau, I want to get back on the same page.
Okay.
So are we talking about putting $250,000 into this year budget or for next year budget?
Next year.
Okay.
But for Mary's Alley, we're trying to find that 258, well, the rest of what we need to 258. So if we moved the Palmetto to next fiscal year, that's 210 of the 258 in this year to get Mary's Alley. So we're looking for 48, if I'm correct. That we need to move into this year's budget for Mary's Alley, this concrete street.
So there's some, I'm looking at a-
So you're 48,000 short?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, if between all the amendments, if some of them are voted, some of them aren't, whatever, they might have a little leftover then. I don't know. Depending on how everything go.
Through all these amendments, can we vote this in GLOBO?
That's up, that's up to the council.
It's up to the council.
I mean, I think you could probably do like kind, like sidewalks, like streets, you know, by those categories.
We've never done it in GLOBO, I will say, right now I don't have an objection to doing it like that.
In the past, like last year for certain, you grouped some things together depending on what, maybe the nonprofit was the one that kind of got grouped together. And then some things you voted individually on, it was just depending on your pleasure of the pleasure of people.
Those that might be more easily approved, you can do that in a bulk vote.
Yeah, that's what we did.
That's my recollection, y'all. It's the pleasure of the council.
I mean, like all these capital requests, we can do all, you know, I can make a motion. If anybody has a problem with it, then we do them individually.
Councilman, Casey's saying that we had the 4-year cover. We got the balance we have, we have the park, that's the park hit covered. All right, so we don't have to stress that as long as we move 210.
So the yellow is covered now? The yellow highlight, Mary Alley?
Correct.
With the amendment and then taking out Palmetto, yes.
Do we need to do public comment? Anybody have any public comments?
Andre, do you think that we need to read all of these for the public comment?
For the public comment?
Okay.
No public comment?
How you?
I have a question. Because I'm hearing people say that they can't see the screen. So for the sake of the public to be able to make a comment or ask a question if they're in the back and they can't see it? I'm looking on my phone, so I can keep up, but there are people who cannot see that. So for public record, you may want to just read the amendments, so if anyone has a question, they can ask the question.
Individually or all group?
It's tiny.
Okay, I'll read through them. Or these are, so we have the proposed budget, which is online, that's what we worked on in the work session. These are the amendments that came up and if I get anything wrong, let me know. Turn the light on. All right, we have one, which is a new item, Live Oak Street sidewalks in an amount of $150,000. A new item of Natches to Live Oak sidewalks, $175,000. A removal from the budget of sidewalks on Linden from West Coleman to West Church of a decrease of $200,000, moving that to fiscal year 25, 26. A drainage addition, or moving it up, Laurel Street from Morris to Thomas of $75,000, moving it from 26, 27 to 24, 25. Drainage of Woodbridge North Outfall, moving it up from 25 to 26 to 24, 25 for an increase of 180,000. Drainage project Alida Drive, east of Hardened Drive at Barnes, no change. That was just adding Barnes per Councilman DiVittorio. A drainage item of Haskins, north of White Street, of an increase of $256,000. Another drainage item of Mar honor to Western Avenue, this was not a change of money, it was just correcting the spelling that was wrong in the budget. Then we have Mooney, we have additional funds going into each park. That was Mooney Park to get $50,000. Clark Park, Zemurray Park, Kate Street Park, Jackson Park, MLK Park, and then adding North Oaks Park of each getting 30,000. So all parks getting 30 and Mooney getting 50. Then we have the street, concrete, concrete street of Minnesota Park was in the budget at $530,000. The amendment is to take it out. And then we just discussed adding $250,000 to the 25, 26 year to hopefully partner with the parish on that. Then we have a capital request from Human Resources. There was a $100,000 salary study item that is to be removed. Then we have a park and grounds capital request of changing the John Deere to a Kubota with a side boom. There's no change to the budget. We're just correcting the brand of the vehicle. Then we have an airport capital request, a John Deere with four-wheel drive of sixteen thousand dollars. That's an addition to the budget. The airport capital request, two John Deere gators, which would be removing one gator, which is a decrease of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Then airport capital request of a Kubota RTV, removing fourteen thousand dollars. That was just removing it from the budget. A recreation capital request, change, a decrease, change the digital sign to an RTV. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar change, decrease to the budget. A recreation capital request, change, John Deere gator, adding the gator of sixteen thousand dollars to the budget. Recreation capital request, change, change the storage building to a multipurpose building. There was no change to the budget, just changing the description. Then the Marshals Office requested additional fifteen thousand for proposed part-time clerk. Then there was the amendment to the budget of adding the animal shelter line item of sixty thousand fifty-seven dollars because this amount is based on population. Then there was a nonprofit line item which was funded. This is removing the funding of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Then we have a change to fund one hundred, the police salary corrections. There are some issues with the salary and it's a line item of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It's just an estimate until SSA provides a new grid. That's an addition to the budget. An increased sales tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, adding an additional, I'm sorry. Yeah, adding additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget in revenue. An increase of sales tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-five, adding five hundred thousand dollars into the budget. Is that correct? Yeah, because we were correcting twenty-four and then adding five hundred. Okay, sorry. Increase transfer from sales tax to the general fund, expense of a hundred thousand and then increase transfer from sales tax to general fund of a hundred thousand. Is that for twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Number seven. Did you read number seven? I didn't hear.
Sorry, Live Oak. I don't know if I did, but I'll, I'll say it again. Live Oak, Mooney to Natchez, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Moved it from twenty-six, twenty, twenty, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty-four, twenty-five. Sorry, the type is very small. Then, as we've just discussed, moving the Palmetto project to twenty-five, twenty-six and then adding two fifty-eight to this current budget for Mary's Alley. I think that's it.
Anyone from the public have any questions on what was just read?
All right. I have one question too. So look, it's four hun, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the police salary. Did they ever come up with a figure, a number, anything on this?
That's our initial estimate. SSA is working on getting the, the final grid that they're working on and it will come before council for council approval and whatever corrections are necessary, you will receive at that time.
And who was SSA? Who was that?
That was the one that we hired originally to do it?
No.
Okay.
They've done work for us in the past.
Okay. What did, where's that other one that did?
H R Nola was the last one that we used for the salary study.
Yeah, because I'd like to ask some, what, what was the deal? Why, how'd they mess up on the figure, on the configurations? That's, that's why we paid them, you know, to do the study. So I don't know how that wasn't found. Why was it such a four hundred thousand dollar swing there?
I think what's causing this is over the years, promotions from jailers to police officer has caused seniority issues with recent promotions and it's kind of.
And that's fixable. So in other words, when someone leaves the jail, they start from the bottom of a patrol officer. Someone leaves records, they go to another, to patrol, let's say, they start at the bottom. They don't go with years of service. It's in your class. You stay in your class with that and that's what caused it fifteen years ago, starting that. Now you have people. And apparently, civil service, you cannot make more than a high-ranking officer in your class.
Any more questions on that one?
Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, excuse me, June twenty-fourth, twenty, twenty-four, six fifty-four P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman Divitorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrew. Councilman Andrews.
Oh, present, I'm sorry. I was looking for someone in the audience to do the prayer, but okay. Brother Bruce Hunter, would you come up and pray for us, please?
Let us all bow our heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you. We thank you for this great opportunity. We thank you for this day. Father God, we ask you that you will look down upon this prayers. Continue, Father God, to lead us and guide us in the way that we have us to go. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. By our pledge of allegiance, at this time, I would ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the prayer. At this time in our agenda, could I get an approval of our minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Divitorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance of the Hammond City Council amending the Unified Development Code defining, defining group living facility, group care facility, homeless shelter, providing for inclusive zoning of each and defining conditional uses.
Mayor.
Uh, do we want to go by your direction, Andre, and not do it in Globo or?
No, no, we're doing number two first, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Feel flop.
My bad.
No problem. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I don't, I don't have anything else to add. I think that there was questions about what are the conditions? This is setting forth that we would eventually come to some conditions. I loved Ms. Jean's comment about having a town hall. So there's a different type of forum for presenting those types of conditions, but we have to start somewhere and this would be the first start. And I also hear the comments about don't move too fast. Be aware that there's nothing. So if you, if you want some type of conditions, this needs to happen and I think it's the right way to move forward personally.
My comment on it is just a, you know, the, the planning process was non-existent in this deal and I think that should have been better planning. A lot of this, what we're doing right now would have been covered in the moratorium I had a while back, that it was moratorium added. This to the multifamily was a homeless shelter and you would have discussed all these items and conditions before would have gotten this far along. And you would, because they had nothing on the books in the U D C on it and this would give it information. This was a deal that was put together really quickly and now that's why we're here in this room right now because we got two sides. Some want it, some don't want it and there's no planning involved in it. If there was more planning involved in it, then probably the room would have been a lot more cohesive and, and along, you know, getting along and, and the same goal would have been accomplished. But a lady said something about Kentwood having a lot of homeless shelters. Well, Hammond is the farthest away from it. So if you wanted to really look at planning and, and where to put it at, it would be centrally located to where it would cover the whole parish. So not one spot. So planning would have been huge on this. There was none. And this was probably the fastest I've seen an overpriced deal put together in my, in my whole career in, in real estate. So it was a very, very quick deal and it's really, it should every sad and y'all to see how fast that money was spent and, and not even really looked at as far as the values go and what you could have gotten for that or how much better you could have done, how much planning could have been involved, putting it in a, a place that wasn't so controversial to the community. And it wasn't, it wasn't there and it's a shame that that's how that happened. And here we are now with all this time that could have been prevented a while back. And thankfully I had support of Councilman Wells and Andrews and, and you know, it, it would have passed, but it was vetoed. And so we wouldn't have been here. We would have been able to have time to plan and, and I, and I know you've heard it a lot, but it's a problem we're at right now and that's, here we are and smart planning sometimes takes a little while and rushing it doesn't do any good. So that's all I have to say about the whole issue.
And remember, they have not passed step one of getting access to this property. So title insurance, attorneys that were involved, I don't know how this was missed, but this is going to go to courts, I'm sure.
Prime example, no planning of property that does not have a clear access to it. So that's, that's where I'm getting at, is that.
Another question I have for you. You say fifty beds. Doesn't this hotel have two hundred plus beds?
Oh, no, that's not correct.
No?
It's two hundred total rooms.
Ma'am, could you come up to the mic for me? Thank you.
Um, there are three portions to this building. The first is the tour that we gave on January nineteenth, which is the renovated portion that the previous owner renovated after Ida. There are fifty-nine units, fifty-nine motel rooms in, on that side. Three of those would be used for offices. Six of those would be used for resident, live-in residential supervisors, which leaves fifty rooms. That's twenty-eight rooms with double beds and twenty-two rooms with single beds. So we're looking at it as households.
But once again.
Single room, single bedrooms would be for individuals and the rooms that have two beds would be for a family.
Clarify for transparency, please. How many rooms does this hotel have total by the end of the third or fourth or whatever phase that you plan on finishing and completing this project? How many rooms are there?
Fifty motel rooms and twenty-four one-bedroom units. So we have revised the plan since the original.
So there's not two hundred rooms as a councilman.
That's correct.
Originally, it was two hundred when we were in that meeting in the hotel or motel. It was two hundred. That's the meeting I went to and it was two hundred.
And I did pass out additional information and I gave you guys a presentation to, to give to you.
So there will be unfinished rooms sitting there in the end of this project, correct?
No, that's not correct. There is a, there is an undeveloped, the whole front of the building is in demolition phase.
Demolition.
And so we initially looked at fifty-seven efficiency apartments. After working with the architect, we came up with twenty-four one-bedroom apartments for that front-facing part that used to be a hotel and is in demolition phase. Is that?
Variety, a mix. It's going to be a variety. All put together, all put together underneath one roof.
Um, there are three sections to the building.
So they're demo in a hundred rooms.
Yeah, but.
I, there was no, I think there were fifty-seven rooms.
I think originally whenever we were told originally it was two hundred rooms, I think sixty efficiency apartments for like, I think, up to six months stay.
I don't think it was ever two hundred rooms. There was always fifty-nine units in the renovated portion of the motel and what we initially looked at was fifty-seven efficiency apartment units for phase two of the project. That since has been, we've worked with the architect on that to lower the number and the density based on comments that we've received from the community.
So when you purchased it, how many rooms were in that hotel?
Fifty-nine rooms in the renovated portion of the motel. Everything else is in demolition, everything else is in demolition phase.
That's just my question.
So that whole building only has fifty rooms?
Well, they're saying fit, that thing's finished right now. The rest of the building is demoed out right now where there's no rooms. They're just a demo phase where it's just open hollow. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. It's hollow. So the whole front.
Just a shell.
Of the building is a shell. No, it would be renovated into twenty-four one-bedroom units.
So it's going to be twenty-four added to the fifty, whatever that is. That's what I'm trying to get in my head.
Eighty-five.
And I'm hearing two hundred and then not hearing two hundred. I'm hearing fifty, then I'm hearing twenty-six, so.
We do have a one-pager and if you would like additional information specifically regarding this plan, I would invite all of you to attend our annual meeting on Wednesday at eleven A.M. at First Presbyterian Church and you can get in-depth information. And again, some of these things were fluid because of things that we heard from the community in terms of the scale of the project, number one, and just kind of making adjustments. And there are still opportunities for adjustments and community planning. We've received a, a grant from the United Way specifically to do community planning and implementation. So anybody who wants to be involved and have significant feedback in terms of the design, planning, and operations, we welcome that. People who are on the fence, people who are opposed, we need everybody in the room to come up with the best determination for this. And I'd also like to say that we are not opposed to the conditions. We just feel that there are people who need to be involved in the process. So one entity that was mentioned was the Balance of State Continuum of Care. That organization is housed within the Louisiana Housing Corporation. The Louisiana Housing Corporation has funded this project and so we think they are an appropriate party to be a part of this conditional process. I did send their habitability standards that they require for their programs. So I, I do think that there are a lot of resources available in terms of best practices.
And then that's where I'm going to go back to the planning part of it. All the revisions, thought and going back and forth, changing and, and four point three million dollars already been spent. So, you know, the whole, whole point of this is the planning process of it. It's not just y'all. It's, it's the whole thing that we, and it's just no planning. So here we are today.
Yeah, I would like to mention something else about that as well. So there is the, there was a, I feel like there's a perception from the community that this project wasn't appraised and that there weren't comparable things that were looked at. We have a two-hundred-page appraisal and I'd be happy to share it with you or anybody else who wants to see that, to determine how this project was appraised. The second piece of that that I'd like to mention is that the sources of funding that we received were coming to the state. They were COVID funds and there were American Rescue Plan funds that were coming to the state. And all we did was advocate that this city got the, its fair share of those funds to create a project. Those funds were allocated and already coming. So I think that's to me a misconception. And if anybody has any additional questions or issues with that appraisal process, I'd be happy to discuss it with them.
And Louisiana Department of Social Services was the other entity that was.
Louisiana Department, the Office of Community Development and the Louisiana Housing Corporation are the two entities that have funded this project.
I understand, but from what I'm understanding, Louisiana Department of Social Services was also be a named partner in helping to draft conditions. So you have no issues with that as well, correct?
All this is for everybody. Want to thank everybody from coming out and really got a chance to hear more tonight than anything from both sides. And a lot of good points was made. When you have a lot to say, you can't say it in three minutes. And it'd have to be a meeting not concern, not dealing with the city council, but the city councilmen should be able to attend. Then I listened to the other side. This is something that we shouldn't rush in because we can sit here. I agree with, with some, a lot of the gentlemen, you know, and a lot of the ladies, you know, fifty years being in Hammond and this something shouldn't be thought upon us or nobody else, conditional use. I, I'm afraid of it because I know a lot of time when it comes to. I know a lot of times when it comes to conditional use, and we're dealing with a trailer, we're dealing with a conditional use, you don't know if that same person standing in that trailer, you don't know who else that moved in that trailer. So when you say conditional use, it always a red flag with me. But it's something that we shouldn't be trying to rush, trying to vote on and nothing else. We should hear every side and go from there. Not, just hold up one second, ma'am. Because I'm talking about what the gentleman said, you know, all the years of service being in Hammond. And I, I listened to one guy say, you know, his, his dad, grandparents, some of the founders of Southeastern, I'm, I'm hearing all of this here. And Hammond have a lot of rich history. And I like how everybody can get up here and say what their grandparents did, what their parents did. I love that. And that goes to show you that I see it's more than me love the city of Hammond. And we should take our time in anything that we make with. Cause this gonna affect us. And just like the man said, from generation after generation, we don't know what effect it ain't gonna have on the next two generations, on the next one generation. So it's something that, this is just me speaking as a city councilman. And then it's in my district. So if I don't talk about it, it's something wrong with me. And I didn't even know it was in my district till uh Sam brought it to my attention. So it's something that I have to take serious. And because it's not only that it gonna affect District Three, it gonna affect the whole city of Hammond. You know, not for one year, not for two years, but years going down the line. So I thank you for everything that you've been doing. And, and we'd have met one-on-one, and I done talked to you several times. So I appreciate everything you're doing. Just the city councilman, we really need to take under consideration. What are we doing? How are we doing? And this something, just my opinion, that this something that planning and zoning, uh, we all need to meet together and make sure that we're all on the same page and moving forward on this here project. So that's, that's my opinion, uh.
Well, I think that was gonna be, I, I ran up on my three minutes, but that was our request, was that we get the people who are experts in this field as well as community members to come and discuss the conditions so that there can be an open conversation for everybody to express their concerns. Because we wanna address them and we wanna be a good neighbor. So I, I heard a lot of people talking about time, but we aren't, we haven't had a request to rush this decision. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Sal Nicolosi. I just think on this uh particular project, I think the city council people really need to analyze it themselves really well. Because it is gonna affect the whole, not only Hammond, but it's, it's gonna affect uh, you know, Puckusen area and all around. So uh, I just think y'all really need to look at it strongly, like Mr. Wells said. And I know Sam brought up some of it, and I haven't heard from some of, you know, the others. But uh, it's, this is a, a very, very strong project. I mean, you know, and like they said, it's gonna be here for a long time. So we need to, you know, there is business places around. There's a service station on the corner. And uh, there's a lot of houses, people living behind the service station. They got a bunch of apartments back there. And you go across the, the overpass 55, then you got red, white, not, I mean, not red, white, but the brew house that's just opened up. And uh, so it's a lot, you know, it's a lot to really think about. And I know that uh, y'all gonna be able to work it out and maybe just put it back till y'all figure out what y'all need to do with it. Like y'all.
You said a mouthful there, Sal. It is a lot to think about. And not having anything on the book, we need to put something on the book in order to start. And it's gonna take a lot of conversations on both sides in order to get to where we need to be. So I make a motion that we accept this ordinance.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
abstain.
Councilman Divatario.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
So hopefully from moving from this point, we can get some type of meetings set up between all interested parties. And also uh, set some uh town hall meetings as well where we can consider, continue to get uh citizens input on this particular project as well, moving forward.
You know, they, they're happy to keep coming here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have another meeting.
Yeah. Alright, final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond's budget for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 in accordance with the procedure set within the, within section five dash zero three of the City of Hammond's charter. Mayor Pete.
I, I put together these in sign of, kind of an order of amendments. So do y'all want me to go through them? Do we have more discussion? Can we give you a summary of them first so you know whether you wanna vote on the amendments?
Carly, just go slow so we can be sure we capture all this in the minutes.
Okay.
As you're going through the list.
Yeah. Alright, the first one is on the, we're gonna start with the capital project so that you know which one. It follows your spreadsheet closely. We have um a, a single ordinance to amend the uh budget with removing Linden, or moving back the Linden sidewalk project, West Coleman to West Church from 2425 to 2526. That's the motion.
Motion, that'd be number three, right on the spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, let me just see a second.
That's a motion?
He's just taking them one at a time right now.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye. Alright, then I'm going to, on the spreadsheet, which is number one and number two. The reason I went in this order is because I'm following the capital projects in our budget. So you were going in that order. I have um a motion to amend the budget to add the Natchez to Live Oak sidewalk project for an amount of 175,000, and to add the Live Oak sidewalk project in an amount of 150,000. Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Alright, then moving on to the drainage improvements on the second page of the five-year capital outlay. I have the moving up. So the, on your, on your items, this is number four and number five on her spreadsheet. And then I'm adding in all the, all the actual changes to the budget. Alright. A motion to amend the budget to add the Laurel Thomas, Morris to Thomas of 100, of 75,000, and uh to add the Woodbridge North Outfall of 180,000. And add Live Oak Drainage, Mooney to Natchez at 210. Haskins, north of White Street at 256,000. And that's it. Those are money changes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
This one is not listed on your spreadsheet because this is one we talked about in this meeting, which is number 14 on the drainage project, which is Palmetto, Mooney to South Morrison Boulevard. There's currently 275,000. This is a motion to move that, to add it to the 300,000 into the fiscal year 2526. So a reduction of the budget of 275,000. Devon, that's the one y'all talked about? You good with that?
Yes.
Okay. That's a single amendment. Need a second.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Alright, this is another amendment, but this is a no change to the budget. It's the, the two description changes. A motion to amend the budget for which is number 15 on the drainage project, Alida Drive east of Hardin Drive at Barnes. That means adding the at Barnes.
Correct.
Alright, and um amending line item number 19 on the drainage project, Mariner to West Avenue. That's just amending to change the spelling of Maroner, excuse me. Yes. So no change to the budget, just fixing those descriptions.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Alright, this is, next amendment is strictly for the, the parks, which is on um page 65 of the budget, the park improvements. I'm gonna do them all together. I make a motion to amend the budget for 2425 to add $30,000 to the following parks. Kate Square, Zemurray Park, Clark Park, Martin Luther King Park, Jackson Park, and to add an item for North Oaks Park of $30,000 each. And also to add $50,000 to Mooney Avenue Park.
Second.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
I make another amendment to the budget, proposed budget, to remove the item for the, sorry, this is on Concrete Streets on the budget, remove Minnesota Park for a reduction of 530,000 dollars from this 2425 budget, and to add 250,000 dollars to the 2526 budget.
Second.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Number, uh, an eighth amendment, which is not on your spreadsheet, we talked about it here, is to add in the concrete street repairs in the budget, an item of, for Mary's Alley for this fiscal year 2024, 25, of 258,000 dollars for an increase to the budget.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Now, I, that's all for the capital amendments unless I missed something. I'll move on to the other things on the spreadsheet unless somebody has something to add to the capital improvements.
Recreation.
Those are all capital requests, so I was gonna do those in a lump. Okay, obviously. I'm sorry. I said that one, to remove that concrete repair. And then we added 250 to next year's budget. Alright, so on your spreadsheet, items 18 through 25, I'm gonna do together. This is all under the capital request item in our budget. I make a motion to amend um human resources capital request to remove the salary study of 100,000 dollars from this budget, so that's a decrease of 100,000.
Second.
Well, I was gonna-
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Unless anyone wants me to not.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, then we have a capital request for parks and grounds, changing uh John Deere to a Kubota with a side boom. That has no change to our budget. Then we have a airport capital request, a John Deere with a four-wheel drive, uh adding 16,000 dollars. Then an airport capital request, um removing one gator from the request for uh John Deere gators. That's a decrease of 27,000 dollars. And then another airport capital request, a Kubota, removing the Kubota RTV of 14,000 dollars for a decrease of 14,000 dollars. Then continuing with the capital request, change um removing, sorry, hold on, change the digital sign to an RTV. That's a decrease of 25,000 dollars. Then the capital request for recreation, a John Deere gator, adding that to our budget for 16,000 dollars. And then for, the last one for capital request, recreation, changing the description from a storage building to a multi-purpose building, no change to the budget.
And how much was that?
You want to explain that?
Thank you. No, one sec, no, no, I got it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Okay, moving on with the spreadsheet. A motion to uh add 15,000 dollars to the proposed budget for the Marshals Office for a part-time clerk.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Abstain.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Then the animal shelter and nonprofit, I'm gonna put together. So I have a motion to amend to add 60,057 dollars to the line item for the animal shelter. And for the nonprofit line item, to remove 228,950 dollars.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Um, next on your, your spreadsheet, uh police, police salary corrections. This is on um to add 411,000, which is an estimate amount for revisions to the police salary.
Second.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Abstain.
Before I do this one, Laura, the last two on here, which is an increase from sales tax to general fund and increased transfer, those, those both should say fiscal year 24? Cause it's cut off on the spreadsheet.
Yes, yes.
No.
We have to move an additional 150,000 digital fund to cover that.
So there's one for fiscal year 24 and one, and the second one's for fiscal year 25?
Revenue, yes, 250,000 24 at the top of the number.
Okay. Alright, I think I'll do it. Correct me if this is wrong. Uh, make a motion, this is for the last four items on your spreadsheet, for the Fund 203. Increase the sales tax revenue for fiscal year 24, 20, uh, yes, fiscal 24 of 250,000. Then increase the sales tax revenue for tw- fiscal year 25 of 500,000. Then increase the transfer from sales tax to general fund expenditure for 24 of 100,000. And then increase transfer of sales tax to general fund, which is a revenue for 25 of 100,000. Wait, what is it?
Say 200.
I-
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Were there any other amendments before we move to adopt as amendments? Anybody have anything else to add? Not that I'm closing it, that would be on you. I don't have anything else to add.
Alright, we'll just move on. All right, we'll just move on.
I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make, yes, make a motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divitario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
All right, introduction of ordinance.
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt the following adjusted millage rates, and they are hereby levied upon the dollar of the assessed valuation of all property subject to ed velour, taxation within said corporate limits of the City of Hammond for the year twenty-two, twenty-four, for the purpose of raising revenue. Millage, general alimony, general fund, five-two-zero-seven-zero-zero-one, eight-point-seven-three-zero mills. Fire, police, five-two-zero-seven-zero-zero-two, which is nine-point-six-five-zero mills. Public Works, general fund, five-two-zero-seven-zero-zero-three, which is one-point-nine-three-zero mills, for a total of twenty-point-three-one-zero mills. Mayor.
Laura.
Can you hear me? So every year, uh, we're required by state law to pass our property tax rate. This is a reassessment year, so we'll have two ordinances, they're both related to each other. Reassessments happen every four years. So the first ordinance is gonna be adopting a revenue-neutral rate, uh, which is given to us by the parish. That is twenty-point-three-one, so we have to adopt the first one to set the rate. The second ordinance is gonna be to, um, the authorized tax levy, it'll be the second, to keep it at twenty-one-point-zero-four. It's been twenty-one-point-zero-four for many years now, um, and we just wanna keep that rate the same as last year. In addition, one point of, uh, note, the Public Works is gonna go to voters next year. It was first passed in twenty-fifteen, and it is time for, to be renewed, uh, next year. So if you have any questions.
Sal.
I'm just a little bit concerned on this, uh, millage. I'm not too familiar with it, but, uh, let's say, you know, a house with income, uh, their in, not income, but their residence is worth a hundred and fifty thousand, what, what kinda, like, millage would that be towards the, uh, the person who owns that property?
So, so what is your question? So do you, are you asking what the property tax would be on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house?
Roughly, if a hundred and fifty thousand, what, what would this millage of twenty-one, zero, four, zero, what, what would it amount to on my, my house, for instance?
They increased the, uh, you're talking about how much would it go up with the adjustment?
Aye.
Did you figure that out, Laura?
If you stick, a hundred and fifty thousand, if you keep the twenty-one, one-four that we wanna roll up to, it'd be the same amount that you paid last year. But the thing is, on this assessment year, since the property taxes for the City of Hammond went up overall, those property values for the City of Hammond went up overall, the parish assessor and the legislative auditor had to adjust the millage rates to keep everything neutral.
And so, just for that, our, the taxable property value increased nine million seven-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars over last year.
Over last?
The property tax value.
Yeah. Uh.
So you're, you're not, if you keep the, if we keep the twenty-four, one-four, you're looking at just paying the same taxes you paid last year.
Well, the only change to that, though, Casey, is if his property values went up.
Then it would go up.
If his property values went up, then, then you may, your taxes may be increased.
Yeah.
That's not because of what the council's doing in adopting millage.
No, it has nothing to do with what the council's doing.
That's only because the property valuation's gone up.
It'll be the same for your sheriff tax, your, your tangiboh parish government tax, all the, all the taxes.
Happens every four years, every four years.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I understand that, I'm just trying to get a, an ex, you know, a, a fixed price in my head about what it's gonna be, and y'all saying it's not gonna cost us anymore, how's it not gonna cost you if you, if last year it was, you know, eight now?
If it changed in value, if your house did not change in value, it will not change your taxes.
I think he's talking about the increase.
That's if the appraiser don't, don't, if he, if the assessor don't appraise it for more. Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on this item? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Councilman Divitario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to increase the millage rates, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year twenty-two, twenty-four. And when collected, the revenue from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said millage rates are, adjusted rate, general alimony, general funds, general funds, five-two-zero-seven-zero-zero-one, adjusted millage rate, eight-point-seven-three-zero mills, twenty-two, twenty-four levy, nine-point-zero-four-zero mills. Fire and police, five-two-zero-seven-zero-zero-two, adjusted rate, nine-point-six-five-zero mills, twenty-two, twenty-four levy, ten, ten-point-zero-zero mills. Public Works, five-two-zero-seven-zero-three, adjusted rate, one-point-nine-three mills, twenty-two, twenty-four levy, two-point-zero-zero mills, for a total of two-zero-point-three, two-zero-point-three-one-zero mills. Um, twenty-two, twenty-four levy, twenty-one-point-zero-four-zero mills, mayor.
Laura.
Okay, so, um, this is, in addition to the first one, accepting the parish rate, th- this is the city rolling forward to keep the same rate that we paid last year and in many previous years from that, to keep it at twenty-one-point-zero-four. What that will net us is five-point-nine million if we adopt the ordinance. If we do not, then the rate goes to twenty-point-three-one, which equals about two hundred thousand dollars difference for the city revenue.
But by state law, the twenty-two, twenty-four levy is, is what we should be passing. We're allowed to pass that.
We're doing the authorized, maximum authorized levy is twenty-one-point-zero-four by state law.
So right now, it's twenty-point-three?
That's what the new adjusted rate is.
The adjusted rate.
For reassessment year.
It's a revenue-neutral, so the property values went up over nine million, so it adjusted the rate down to twenty-point-three-one to keep us, our revenue neutral from last year.
But by state law.
Which is required by state law. The second ordinance is to accept the twenty-one-point-zero-four millage, which is what we've done for many years now. We wanna keep it the same, cause if, if we do not, then we cannot come back later and change it, we're gonna be stuck at the twenty-point-three.
Yeah, this is an introduction anyways, isn't it? Yeah, okay.
Anyone from the public on this item? Excuse me. Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Councilman Divitario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution number one.
Resolution one, accepting a forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollar grant from the local government assistance program to make necessary repairs and renovations to the Levy Building, and to authorize in the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. There is no match requirement, mayor.
Uh, these are grants funds that will add to budgeted funds that, uh, for the Levy Building repairs of a hundred thousand dollars.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions that concern from anyone on the council? I make a motion to, uh, approve, I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divitario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
To review and consider appeal by Guys One LLC of the decision of the Hammond Historic District to assess a fine related to multiple maintenance violations. Attorney Frank Divitario.
I don't, I, uh, I got a phone call earlier today from Mr. Divitario, said he was not coming, that Daryl Smith, Daryl, this is your item.
Daryl Smith, two-ten Northwest Road, Rhode Avenue. I believe today, I'm, uh, we're up here to speak about, uh, with the court, there's some litigation in there underway right now regarding the Guys building. As y'all may, or may not know, the court has issued a stay of any action by the historic, uh, committee, and I would ask that y'all postpone taking any action at this time, which I think there's a, there's a, uh, a motion to fine me on weeds growing on the building, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so what's really, what's before the council is the, uh, decision of the commission to impose a fine.
Yeah, there's some visit, visitation, vegetation that has grown inside of the building, I believe my men have removed it, maybe it's grown back. There's one or two spots of graffiti, but there's graffiti on several of the buildings in downtown Hammond, so I've asked, I'm asking y'all today to not impose any fines and let the district court, and the district court has issued a stay of any further action by the committee, is that right?
Well, the, what the dis, the, the lawsuit was filed, and the district court issued a stay as to the historic district commission, not as to the council.
Oh, yes, correct, so I'm asking the commission to, I mean, the, uh, council to, uh, perhaps wait and let's see what the district court issues in, in the months or weeks or years.
So you're asking not to hear the appeal, so that appeal would still be out there, you're asking them to delay a vote on the appeal of the fines?
Are you asking to table it?
Can I recommend that we table this until after the stay?
Yeah.
Absolutely, that, that's one of the, you may wanna hear from Heather, who's here from the, uh, historic district commission, but that's certainly one of the options you all have, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I guess I'm re- requesting that y'all.
Table it.
Table it.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome, Heather.
Heather Diebold, Historic District, City of Hammond. It is the belief of the Historic Commission that the request for an appeal made by Frank Divitario on behalf of Guys One LLC and Daryl Smith was untimely pursuant to UDC eight-point-one-point-twelve-A and Louisiana Revised Statute Twenty-Five, Section Seven-Forty-One. In summary, an aggrieved person has ten days from the date of a decision from the Historic Commission to request an appeal. It does not state ten business days, nor does it state ten days exclusive of holidays and weekends. Decision regarding the imposition of fines for failure to maintain property was handed down on May fifteenth, twenty-two, twenty-four. Appeal was not requested until May twenty-eighth, twenty-two, twenty-four, thirteen days later. It is fair to say that while the honorable counsel acts as a local governing legislative body of the city, it is not a court of law. It is not in the past, nor should it now be required to adhere to the rules of civil procedure. This means that the computation of time for submission to the governing body should be governed by the UDC for the City of Hammond, and any requests made outside the ten-day allotted period of time is untimely and should not be entertained.
Thank you.
And in addition, we did impose the fines on May fifteenth, the, um, order to stay was not issued until May twenty-first.
I, I have a question, Andre, if, so let's just say that the, um, appeal was denied, right? This order says all action of the Historic Commission. If this appeal were denied, they could put a lien on the property, they could try to collect?
Now, well, that's so interesting.
Because then they're doing an action and they're prevented from doing that.
I don't know that they can, I don't know that they can. So, yes, so, um, this doesn't prevent the council, I don't believe, from voting whether to hear the appeal.
Right.
First of all, you need to vote whether it was timely, but if you did vote to, to not hear the appeal, I don't think the commission could take a step to enforce it because of the stay.
Right.
So it enforces the action of the commission, not the council. So even if you were to deny the appeal, I don't think the commission, because of that order, could enforce it, cause they, they're stayed from any action. Until it's either, until it's lifted or any further order.
Then I think that, honestly, if you have, they can't enforce it whether or not we hear it, so the stay, see how the stay comes out, how that is litigated. I don't want to do anything that then would violate what the court has ordered, so I think that it, my personal opinion is it should be tabled, as they request, until that stay is either listed or there's some outcome, um, determining whether the Historic District can move forward with any action towards Guys.
I would recommend that, if that's the inclination, that you just simply table it, and you also table the question of whether it's a timely appeal. Basically table both of those, but not make it conditioned on anything specific. Certainly, we're not gonna take an action that's gonna violate a court order, but you may decide to maybe move forward with the appeal some point in the future. So I wouldn't condition necessarily table on it.
I wasn't trying to say condition, I'm saying that's the reasoning behind, it makes sense to table it.
It's in litigation right now, so I mean, I, I don't see what's the point in messing with it right now, so I mean, I, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay, so, right.
Second.
That's to table the appeal and the question of whether the appeal's timely.
Table what's on the, on the agenda, I mean, on the agenda, it says to review and consider appeal Guys' decision to Hammond Historic District assess a fine related to multiple maintenance violations. I make a motion to table that, that's what's on the agenda.
Yes, sir, so what was, what was brought up was the, the objection by the Historic District that the appeal itself was untimely. So to me, you would just delay all of this, ta- table all of those questions to some point in the future. Right, that's, yes. So is that, I mean, is that fairly?
I mean, I don't know, I didn't see that, I don't know, I didn't see that on the.
No, no, that was just raised tonight.
That was raised tonight, so it wasn't on the agenda, so that's why I, I'm talking about what's on the agenda right now, that's why I've made a motion to table what's on the agenda.
Okay, so it's just a table what's on the agenda?
That's what I made, a motion to table what's on the agenda, cause I didn't see that, so.
These are a second to that motion.
Repeat what you was just saying, Andre.
So what, what, what was, was brought up tonight is the question of whether the council should hear the appeal of the fine, the Historic District imposed a fine. Mr. Smith appealed that to the, to the council. So there's litigation going on that really just impacts the commission, not the council, but the sense is, really, the commission can't take any further action irrespective of what the council does. But it was raised tonight, the question of whether that appeal should be heard at all, whether it was timely or not. So my thought was just table everything, table both whether it's timely and whether you should, if it is timely, whether you should overturn it. If you vote and say it's not timely, then there's no appeal. So what, what, what Councilman Divitario wants is just to limit it just to the hearing the appeal, not the question of whether it's timely or not. Okay, since we didn't.
Add the motion to.
Well, he can amend the. We didn't have a second, since we didn't have a second. There's no second yet. I'll make a motion, just, which is set both. If there's no second, then that one motion then fails for lack of a second. Correct. So then I'll make a motion for what you said, the two, the two. Both of them, both, both issues. To do both of them, that is correct, thank you, sir. These are a second to that motion.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Divitario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Reports, mayor.
Uh, Camp Blue is in session out at the Police Training Center. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you there.
I wanna thank all of y'all very much for your, uh, cooperation, thank you, Andre, and, uh, Andrew wants to say something. Thank you all.
He don't, he don't wanna say no right now, huh?
Very good, very good.
Good job, buddy.
You, you deserve an ice cream.
Pete?
Uh, once again, Camp Blue is in session out at the Police Training Center for kids and adults as well. This year, another record-setting year, a hundred and twelve, uh, participants. Fireworks, Fourth of July, six to nine P.M. Zemurray Park, train rides, inflatables, DJs, food trucks, and snowballs. Uh, get out there and enjoy with your family and friends. Uh, Recreation Camp is also, uh, going great, a hundred and fifteen enrolled, swimming, canoeing, games, et cetera. Pool is, is open, lots of folks. Thanks once again to Star Equipment for providing, uh, trailer for the Fourth of July, thank you for all you do.
Any, excuse me, any council reports?
The Fourth of July, um, still having that, that same fireworks show, everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Any other report? Motion to adjourn.
Second.